Good evening and welcome to the Merrimack School Boards meeting tonight, Tuesday, January 16, 2018. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. If anyone from the public would like to speak, please come to the microphone, over to the side, state your name and address for the record, and if you are a student, just your name and grade. First name and grade. We actually have publics on giving at the moment, but seeing that no one is leaving their seats, we will now close public participation. And we will go on to item number three, which is proposed full-day kindergarten presentation. And I bring to the table the elementary school principals, teachers, and parents who will be presenting tonight. Thank you and welcome.
So, good evening and thank you for having us this evening. We're quite appreciative to be back here for our third presentation this, well, since June 2017 about proposed full-day kindergarten for the town of Merrimack. Our first presentation was done by myself and my two colleagues, Bridie Bellomare and Michelle Romaine, and it was just really setting the stage for the notion of full-day kindergarten in Merrimack. In our second presentation in October, we took questions that were really very important questions that the school board had proposed to us and had asked for more information. So, the three of us presented then. And this presentation this evening is really for an opportunity for the parents and the educators, the kindergarten teachers from the three lower elementary schools to have an opportunity to talk about why it is that they believe that, in the importance of full-day kindergarten. I want to take a moment to introduce persons. I am Kimberly Yarlot. I am principal of Reed's Ferry School, and I am the chair of this task force, which was put together a year ago. And to my left is Michelle Romaine. She is the principal of Master Cola Elementary School. And to her left is Bridie Bellomare, and she is principal of Thornton's Ferry School. To my right, we have three educators who are joining us. They're all fabulous kindergarten teachers currently. Chris Tebow is principal at Reed's Ferry School. And to her right is Barbara Burns, a principal at Thornton's Ferry School. Sorry. What did I say? You don't want my job? I'm ready to turn over my keys. Okay, I'm sorry. Barbara Burns, kindergarten teacher of Thornton's Ferry School, and Kim Bolduc, Master Cola Elementary School kindergarten teacher. And to the far right, we have three parents with us tonight. Brian Stisser. And to his right is Brittany Gagnon. And to her right is Ingrid French. And they are here to also share some testimonies with you. We have prepared a brief PowerPoint. In this PowerPoint will be encompassed some answers to some questions that you had asked from our last presentation, as well as some research, parent testimony, and the desired components for a quality full-day kindergarten program in Merrimack. So, we are going to begin our presentation, and hopefully our PowerPoint runs without any glitches. And we're going to begin by reminding the board and the public about the vision statement that we had created as what we see for Merrimack and what we see for our young five-year-olds. And we're going to start with Bridie Bellomare.
Good evening. As my colleague has indicated, this is our message that we intended to bring back to the board and also for viewers this evening about our vision for a comprehensive quality full-day kindergarten program. And tonight's presentation is intended to highlight some of the elements of this vision. Specifically, what does that program look like? The benefits to children, both academically, social, emotionally. And we've also, we're also going to present research that talks about the benefits of the long-range effects of children that are part of a full-day program. And there are some statistics there in the second paragraph that include but aren't limited to some of that research, such as improved overall health and wellness, reduced dropout rates, reduced delinquency, and overall increase in academic achievement, even at the higher ed level. So, we look forward to sharing some of that research with you this evening.
Thank you. Before we get into that, we wanted to take a minute to answer some of the questions that you had asked at the last meeting we were at. And so, one of them was relevant to the number of programs, districts that are offering full-day kindergarten at this time. And we have a map here that shows the kindergartens in 15 and 16. So, what I did was reach out through the New Hampshire Principals Association through a list serve. And I put out an inquiry asking for districts that were in their first year of full-day implementation, and then districts that were in their, who were planning for the 18, 19 school year. So, if we advance to the next slide. I immediately, within 48 hours, got 14 responses back, a number of which who reached out and said, "Please contact me." So, then the school districts listed on the left are in their first year of implementation. And then you can see the other five that are in the planning for implementation in 18, 19. One of the other things that you had asked about was impact on transportation. So, after talking with the transportation coordinator, at this point, there would be no additional cost around transportation. We have the routes that are currently in place, and the number of buses would effectively be able to transport our kindergarten students to and from school. In addition, it would eliminate some of the vans that we have in the middle of the day, that we currently have. And we may be able to put more students together on one van. The other question was around lunch. So, I met with Dave DeZicki, the head of food services for the district. He reminded me of the times in the district when there were grades one through five in an elementary school, and they were serving lunch to up to 135 students per grade level. So, he didn't feel as though the kindergarten, having kindergarten students in our lunch program would have a huge impact. We also talked about the fact that this past school year, we had the opportunity to have our kindergarteners with us for three full days. And that included the students staying for lunch. And we were able to accommodate all of those students easily. And a large number of them did buy hot lunch. And he actually spoke to the fact that it could help the program because there could be increased revenue by more students accessing the lunch program. So, I will turn it over to Barb Burns now and Kim Bolduc to talk more about the day.
We wanted to look at the academic learning expectations for our kindergarten children at this time. And in the future, we've used the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program, Envisions Mathematics, and the Fonteson-Pinnell Guided Reading Program. Each of those programs were written for full-day kindergarten. And we have had to abbreviate those programs to fit them into our half-day, two-and-a-half-hour program. So, we have had to make accommodations and adjustments. Looking at the next slide. Our schedule will change, would change drastically from 440 hours of instructional time to 920 hours of instructional time per year. As I just stated, that each of those curriculums have been abbreviated to fit into the full day and to fit into a half-day program. In a full-day program, we would be able to fully implement them as they have been designed to meet our children's needs. Our children do not receive art, music, PE, and computer instruction at this point. In a full-day program, they would be able to take part in each of those programs. Because of the high academic demands of our program, the majority of our time is spent on the literacy and math instruction with very little time on the gross motor and play-based activities. In a full-day program, we would have more opportunities to integrate science, social studies, and the arts into our regular instruction. We'd also have time for gross motor, fine motor, and play-based activities built right into our day. And Kim is going to look at the specific schedule.
So, on the left side is the half-day schedule that we currently are doing. And on the right side is our proposed full-day schedule. If you look at the key down below, the blue represents direct instruction, which is a teaching method used to teach specific skills. Whereas the green parts of the schedule represent student-led activities. And this is where the teacher acts more like a coach. And she can, or he can, guide children in activities and assign activities that suit specific children's needs. So, on the left-hand side for half-day, you could see that it's all directed, direct instruction by the teacher. And if you move to the full-day schedule proposed, we have direct instruction of math, where we're teaching our Envisions, the math program we're currently teaching, learning centers, and guided practice through that. And then we have a snack and a free-play motor break, which is the student-led activities. And then we'll move into literacy, excuse me, with our guided reading groups and learning centers, phonics instruction, writing workshop, where we'll be able to do the Fonteson-Pinnell and Lucy Cawkins. And then lunch and recess. Then we'll have another student-led activity for science and social studies. STEM activities, where the children will be able to bring in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, different inquiry tasks and explorations. They'll also be able to go to, as Barb mentioned, art, music, PE, and computer, like the rest of the elementary students. And then end our day with another project-based learning, whether it's an outdoor experience, fine motor, gross motor activities. So, the full day allows a balance of both direct and instructional, direct instruction and student-led activities. It's a time for social interaction. All of these activities allow time for cooperative learning, positive social skills, problem-solving activities, fine and large motor development. And all of these components are what make a quality full-day kindergarten program. So, the next slide, we have two short clips to show you about what a directed instruction looks like and a student-led activity looks like.
For questions. What are we going to do? Answer questions about key details. What kind of details? All right. And pictures in a text. What are we going to be looking at? Pictures in a text. So, that's what we're going to do. We're going to read some texts. We're going to answer some questions. And we're going to look at some pictures and answer some questions. So, one of the things that I want to focus on today is how we're going to do this. The teacher is going to, as a teacher, I'm going to read the text for you. You're going to listen as I read. Then you're going to be working with a partner today and doing what we call think, pair, share. I'm going to talk about that in a moment. Then you're going to be talking with your partner, and then you're going to be listening as I answer a question. So, we do this thing called think, pair, share. And I call it think, pair, share. He did that with me? Think, pair, share. So, that's what we're going to do today. Because good readers, when they read, they think about what they read. They pair, or they talk to their neighbor, about what they read. And then they share what they read with the group. So, we're going to, do it again. Think, pair, share. So, you guys ready?
So, once again, that was an example of a teacher, heavily teacher-directed, not dissimilar to what you'd see. This one's guided practice, but we're going to skip that one and go to an inquiry-based, if we have it. If we don't, we can do the guided. We lost the other one. And that's okay. Okay, it looks like we lost it. So, if this one plays, this would be an example of some guided practice. The other example we had was students literally working within a STEM activity. But we've been having a couple of glitches as we've been trying to put this PowerPoint together. So, we'll...
So, as we were joking earlier, if we had full-day kindergarten programming, we'd have a student that would have figured this out for us already.
Okay, so we'll move on? Okay, if we can have the lights up, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brittany Gagnon, and I'm one of the parents on the kindergarten task force. My son Lucas goes to Reed's Ferry Elementary School. I'd like to briefly respond to a point made at one of last month's school board meetings. It was stated that the number of transitions in a day would be the same whether kindergarten was half-day or full-day. Well, this is true for the morning kindergarten program. The children in the afternoon kindergarten program also require before and after care, which would create three transitions for them. From a personal perspective, my son had an extremely difficult time adjusting to multiple transitions. He would get dropped off in the morning at daycare, board the bus to Reed's Ferry for afternoon kindergarten, then get back on the bus for after-school care. Between Reed's and the kindergarten extension program at the YMCA, he would bounce back and forth between two different teachers, two different social settings, two different classrooms with different rules and different expectations. And he would be expected to do this five days a week. When he started first grade this past September, my husband and I noticed an immediate positive change. I believe this was due to spending his entire day in the same place with the same teachers, classmates, and one set of expectations. We want our four-year-old daughter Lydia, who starts kindergarten in September, to be able to benefit from the same stability in her schedule and daily routine. I truly believe full-day kindergarten in Merrimack would result in the students getting settled in their school a year earlier and would lessen the negative impact of various transitions throughout the day at such a young age. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ingrid French, and I am a mother of three young girls with my oldest starting kindergarten this fall. She shows her excitement about starting big-girl school and riding the bus as well. She constantly asks if we can drive by Reed's Ferry almost every day. I have watched her blossom this past year with her writing and math skills during her pre-K class. Every day, she amazes me with how much she has learned and is trying hard to put her skills to use. As a mother, I am encouraged for her to have an opportunity to start learning and developing in artistic, social, and the STEM education disciplines. I can clearly see she is ready for her next step in her education, as well as her little sister's really close behind her. I do worry about the impacts of not having the structure of a true school environment that is absent in daycare. Children in daycare aren't learning the school curriculum of a school, and they aren't getting what it means to be a true student. And smaller issues are harder to detect in daycare, such as recognizing social and emotional issues or a speech and language communication disability. Recognizing and addressing the individual student's early development needs is key. So, full-day kindergarten prepares our children for first grade when daycare does not. It allows the students to understand the routines in a school setting. The children are being guided for reading, phonics, and handwriting from a team of teachers and in a classroom of diverse learners. And as was discussed with a comparison of schedules in the previous slides, it is hard and near impossible, I feel, to provide a strong curriculum in a half-day kindergarten timeframe. I like to say our children are like sponges, and they're so thirsty to learn and grow. It is our obligation as a community to offer these opportunities. We, as a community, are supposed to lift and encourage our young students to learn and explore our world. Denying some children the same educational opportunities as those of our neighboring communities places our children at a distinct disadvantage. By not offering full-day kindergarten to our young ones, we will be depriving them this awesome opportunity to grow and develop their skills. It would be a disservice to our children, to ourselves as parents, and a disservice to our community by holding them back and not allowing them to flourish. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Hi, my name is Christine Tebow. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Reed's Ferry School. And as a kindergarten task force, we have submitted to the school board a representative sample of studies that explore the effects of full-day kindergarten. Kindergarten is much newer than public education. Since the Middle Ages, childhood education has followed a very specific path. Children started at six years old and continued until society considered them ready for full-time employment. In the 1800s, massive economic, social, and political changes across Europe put such schools badly out of step with the needs of the communities around them, especially when it came to early childhood education. Kindergarten came into being as a place where young children would master the new social and early learning goals that they would need to succeed in schools, teaching towards this new political and economic environment. The contributions of these early kindergarteners can be seen everywhere. The playground, the happy birthday song, and the ABC song, all originated in these kindergartens. The first free public kindergarten opened in the United States in 1883 and was quickly followed by others as communities recognized the value it offered. Today, kindergarten is attended by some 70% of children across our country. So, the question, does research support bringing full-day kindergarten in a public school district such as Merrimack? As we look at the research on the effects of kindergarten, a number of themes have merged. Number one, most of the existing research examines the presence or absence of kindergarten in a community without looking at the quality of the programs involved. So, for example, if a study looked at kindergarteners across a certain city, it combined outcome data from all the city's kindergarteners, the poor-quality ones along with the high-quality ones. Mathematically, this kind of averaging nearly always leads to finding no effect. Average a negative outcome with a positive one, and you get zero. Number two, most of the existing research focuses on the same measures of academic success, standardized test scores and grades. Very few measure skills directly. And number three, most of the existing research focuses on young children and gathers data for only a few years. Very few studies track beyond the fifth grade. Given these limitations, let's look at our research about academics in a full-day kindergarten program. In your handout, in the section labeled "academics," the first study I would like to highlight is by Brunel et al., published in 2015. This study was conducted in Canada and looked at full-day kindergartens across many provinces. The study found that attending kindergarten had benefits, but did not necessarily translate to higher grades for all children as they progressed through school. Rather, they found that the benefits were specific to the type or quality of the program, school demographics, and other variables. Another study worth highlighting is Cooper et al., published in 2010. This study is a meta-analysis measuring that, rather than collecting its own data, it combined and analyzed data across 19 existing studies. The analysis found that full-day kindergarten leads to an immediate boost in skills and academic performance that, when averaged across the studies, levels out by third grade. Taken together, the studies in this section of the handout indicate that kindergarten does successfully teach a variety of important early learning skills. But that quality of program and other factors affect whether those gains are maintained over time. Since the academic research is so limited, we next looked for studies that examined other aspects of a successful education. Clearly, educating a child is far more than students getting a certain standardized test score in third grade. The goal of public education is to create successful, independent adults who contribute positively to the communities where they live. In the handout, we highlight two such outcome areas, social-emotional health and long-term outcomes. I'd like to highlight two studies in this category. In 2017, Goff, Reed, and Lead found that compared to half-day kindergarten, children in full-day kindergarten had lower BMI, they were less likely to be overweight, and had more outdoor playtime and longer physical education sessions. Interestingly, they were also less likely to watch TV. In 2011, McIntosh et al. looked beyond academics and compared literacy skills acquired during early childhood to behavioral referrals later on. They found that skill growth in young children was correlated to better behavior outcomes later on. These findings make sense. Half-day programs can be absolutely wonderful, but the need to compress curriculum limits the time that we can be given to the social, emotional, and health needs of a kindergarten student. The last part is the most interesting and perhaps the most important among those that we found. A great deal can be learned from studies that are truly longitudinal in nature. In other words, that track not just test scores in third and fifth grade, but that have followed kindergarteners from early childhood through adulthood. In his book, The Sandbox Investment, Kierpe describes the long-term outcomes of a large early childhood program that used a problem-solving approach to learning, an approach very similar to the inquiry-based learning approaches we use here in Merrimack. Note that unlike many of the studies above, this one does pay attention to program quality. The study followed the kindergarten cohort into their 40s. Kindergarten attendees had more family stability, earned more money, were less likely to be on assistance, and less involved in crime. In 2011, Chetty et al. looked at a kindergarten cohort of over 11,000 students and compared adult outcomes based on kindergarten performance. A good kindergarten experience correlated strongly to adult outcomes, such as earnings, college attendance, home ownership, and retirement savings. Bringing these together, a clear picture emerges. Academically, there's a strong immediate benefit to having full-day kindergarten. In other words, children learn more in a full-day kindergarten than they do in half-day or without kindergarten at all. The immediate benefits do not last on their own. In other words, just adding kindergarten does not mean that these academic gains will be maintained. Moving beyond test scores, full-day kindergarten has social, emotional, and health benefits over a half-day kindergarten. Evidence for positive adult outcomes is strong. In other words, children who attend a quality full-day kindergarten become adults who are more successful in many aspects of adult life than enabled them to be strong members of their communities. We would now like to transition to talk about the benefit to those of our community that don't necessarily have children in the Merrimack School District. So, I will now turn it over to Brian Stisser.
Thank you. As Christine mentioned, I am Brian Stisser. I am a parent. My son is not yet in the Merrimack School District. But what I want to focus on is more the economic picture around full-day kindergarten, or the lack thereof. So, in terms of the academic literature, most of the academic economic literature looks at either early childhood education at large or elementary education at large, not isolating down to kindergarten, let alone full-day versus half-day kindergarten. Broadly speaking, the research is very favorable, shows very favorable economic impact from education spending, particularly early childhood education spending, in the resources on... In the resources on the district website, there's a video of a TED Talk where the speaker mentions the figure of $2.78 in increased per capita earnings per dollar invested in early childhood education, average across the community. So it does increase wealth in the, investments in early education do increase wealth in the community, but we can't say exactly how much an investment in early childhood educa- or in full-day kindergarten versus half-day kindergarten would, in fact, return from an economic standpoint. But what we do know are some of the broader economic and demographic trends, both in New Hampshire as a state as well as in Merrimack as a community. So one of the constant top issues for employers or prospective employers in New Hampshire is the small and shrinking workforce, as demonstrated by our unemployment rate, which is among the lowest in the country. As a state, it's at 2.7% versus 4.1% for the country. And in, for the town of Merrimack, it's actually 2.5%, so even below the New Hampshire total. For reference, the Federal Reserve puts full employment at a long-term figure of somewhere around 5%. So we are well below what would be an optimal level of employment for the community. And what that means is that companies are hesitant to relocate to anywhere in New Hampshire, but obviously, in particular towns that have especially low unemployment, because they can't hire people to do critical jobs. In particular, they have a hard time hiring skilled workers, particularly those with either valuable trade skills or college education. The demographic trend that is really driving this decline in New Hampshire's workforce is driven in large part by the increasing number, or increasing percentage of retirees in our state and our state's increasing average age. So from 2010 to 2016, the percentage of retirees in the state of New Hampshire, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, went from 13.5% to 17%. That was in six years, that it increased by, what is that, about 30% over a six-year window. The average increase, or the average age in New Hampshire from 2000 to 2010 went from 37.1 years old to 42.8 years old. We have one of the fastest-aging populations in the country, again, also leading to a rapid increase in retirees and a continuing decline in unemployment further below levels that are sustainable in the long term. After several years of negative population growth, as a state, we actually do see our population as a whole growing again entirely from migration, people moving into New Hampshire, or more people moving in than moving out, the number of births and deaths being roughly equal. That number for July 2016 to July 2017 was a whole 7,800 people who moved into our state of 1.3 million, 0.58% increase in population across the state. Obviously, that's not even across the state. In Merrimack, we've actually seen our labor force, and I don't have this number for total population of Merrimack, although it's remained pretty steady, but our labor force has actually shrank by 3.78% in, simply between 2016 and 2017. So we already are talking about 17% of the population being retired at this time, and we're continuing to lose 3.8% of our workforce year over year. Obviously, in the long term, we already have a labor shortage that is making it difficult for employers who would like to locate in our community to do so. If we continue to lose 3.8% of our labor force over time, I don't think it takes too much imagination to see where that goes. Even the employers who are here now, like BAE Systems, who already is having trouble filling many, many positions and is terrified of the wave of retirements that they're looking at and how they're going to be able to fill their contracts when that happens, how are they going to stay here at that point? There will come a point where they're going to have no choice but to pack up and leave town if they just can't hire anyone. I don't want it to sound like I am bashing the elders in our community. They are highly valued members of our community. However, from an economic development standpoint, we need a workforce that is able to provide skilled employees for employers to be able to locate here. And those skilled employees are professionals. And so the question is, what can we do as a town to attract young professionals who can fill those jobs we hope to attract? And as a 30-something millennial professional, married to another millennial professional, I can say with certainty, and my wife and I have discussed it, if we were buying a home again today as opposed to a few years ago, we would not choose to buy a home in a town that did not have full-day kindergarten with the attention around the issue at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So everyone here has spoken, and I just wanted to impress upon you that, you know, I'm an educator, I'm an administrator, I'm a parent and grandparent, and our plea to Merrimack and the residents is to really look at making our educational system whole, preschool through 12th grade. We have preschool in each of the three lower elementary schools, and to have a really comprehensive continuum of educational services for our students and to remain competitive with our neighbors. I hold Merrimack education system up against all. I work with educators and administrators throughout the state, and Merrimack truly has a very high-quality educational system, rigorous, cutting-edge, and we would need to just really look at that continuum and make it even finer, particularly for those new people moving into town. So we want to thank you very much for this opportunity to present to you tonight, and we are open to any further questions, though we feel that we have done a pretty good job, you know, getting the research out to you and answering some of the impacts, the questions about impacts on budget and impacts on programming. So entertain any further questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? I see Andy.
So thanks to everybody at the table, parents and educators and administration. You've addressed everything we've asked so far, and this is really good, a lot of good information. There is one question that came up, and this is sort of listening to discussion from people in the community. You've talked about the program that you have for half-day and what it would look like if you went to full-day kindergarten. If you have a parent that chooses to only send their child to half-day, we do full-day kindergarten, it passes, but if parents choose to only send their kid to half-day kindergarten, how would you handle that scenario?
So I will offer up a suggestion and then turn it over to Marge Chaffrey, Superintendent. We are seeking to do full-day and not seeking tuition for people to pay. We want it to be equal to all, and we really want to encourage all five-year-olds to attend full-day programming in Merrimack.
I'll just clarify the reason I'm asking. It has nothing to do with financial economics, but there are some parents that believe that their child isn't ready to spend an entire day in a kindergarten and are looking for something half-day program. So my question is, if we offer kindergarten, does that, is there any way we can accommodate that in Merrimack's public schools?
I would say I think we're always about accommodation, but the way we're thinking is that we would hope, that we would, given the opportunity, to engage the child in what we have planned because we think it would really be beneficial for all. And I think we accommodate children with all needs now, and we would take into consideration what the concerns of these parents are and try and make sure that programmatically we were addressing those needs.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Michael.
Thank you, everyone, for presenting. I do appreciate it. You've answered some of my questions in regards to the surrounding communities and how they might be coming forward with kindergarten in the near future. I'm expecting that, since you used the listserv, some people didn't respond. Did you reach out in any other method to possibly see if the surrounding communities were looking at it in the near future?
So one of the queries that we made was to the Department of Education, and the most recent rendering they have is the 2015-16 map that you saw. So the only way we can access that is through what Michelle talked about, which was a listserv, you know, minus contacting every single party that's not listed. I think some communities, Mike, are waiting to see what happens with the aid there, if they're not going to do it this year, they're going to be looking at doing the following year. I just think you're going to see more districts engaged in full-day kindergarten.
I'd probably agree with you, and I think that there might be some communities that are probably engaged already, but using just a listserv instead of actually reaching out. I would suggest that, since we're going forward to present this to the voters, that it would actually be valuable if the data was as full as possible, as complete as possible, so that we could actually see if there's other communities around and actually maybe color in that map a little bit more.
Yeah, and we did impress upon the state that that was a very important map, and we can only give you what they have. And right now, our understanding is, the most current is 2015-16, so we'll just continue to ask between now and February.
I guess what I'm asking is to skip the state and actually go directly to communities. Thank you.
Andy?
And to piggyback on what Michael said, so part of the research I get coming into tonight was looking at what other districts had done, and Milford was one of those districts that last year tried to introduce kindergarten through a warrant article where they were charging parents' tuition. Now, the net is that they didn't get enough parents to sign up, so they didn't do full-day kindergarten. I noticed, Michelle, on your list, Milford's up there again, it's planning. My question would be, is Milford planning to do another self-funding one, or are they going to do a fully funded by the town? Are they changing sort of their approach this time? It'd be good just to understand what, as a surrounding community, they're doing.
So, Cindy.
I wanted to thank you all for coming tonight. The information that you provided has been very thorough. I realize that this has been a year in progress. There's been a lot of meetings behind the scenes. You've done a lot to prepare for this, and you certainly have provided us with a lot of information over the last eight to nine months. So I thank you, wholeheartedly I thank you. I believe that Merrimack is ready for full-day kindergarten. I'm really excited at the prospect of being able to potentially put this to the warrant, and I really thank everyone for all of their work towards making this become closer to a reality.
So I have a couple of comments as well. The first thing I would say is, as we're deliberating, I think what we have to do is look at our code of ethics. And I think that when we're looking at deliberating on the subject, full-day kindergarten really does fall in line to what we sign off on as board members. So our first responsibility is to the students of the district, and what we're getting the opportunity to present to those students is a more rigorous, fulfilling, enriching educational experience for kindergarten. In the land of FOMO, as we call it, fear of missing out, the thought of having Merrimack be that community surrounded by those who don't offer full-day kindergarten, I think is something that can create a very quick knee-jerk reaction to the dynamic of the community and even the real estate market, which you've brought up. It's not just, you know, what I would say, inviting companies to come in, it's what can it do in the immediate as we are having all these districts that you, Michelle, thank you for compiling, brought to our attention that are, if they haven't offered it, are on the precipice of offering it. So we are in the conversation. So when it comes to taxpayers, not only do we have to worry about the tax that we're charging them, but we have to worry about what they're getting for their dollar. And if we are offering less than what our surrounding communities are, it's not going to do well for our home values, and I know you brought that up as well, so I wanted to reiterate that. So again, when you look at our code of ethics, again, it falls back into that. And at the end of the day, as we're deliberating, you know, what other communities are doing, I think it's what's important to us is, what are we doing, grades one through 12? And we're doing a lot. We're doing a new math program. We are constantly evolving the science curriculum. It's, we're rolling out new, you know, we've rolled out new content. We are really looking at always taking one step forward in how we're delivering our academics, one through 12, while preparing them more thoroughly and rigorously in kindergarten in a way that will make them look forward to school based on the structure of a sample day that you're giving, is exactly what I think this district is about. So if, you know, if parents do need to elect to do what they feel is best for their child and it's different than what we're offering, we address that every day in the district. I know when it comes to things like content, you can absolutely opt out. If it's about time in the district, then, you know, parents need to collaborate with their building leadership, their, you know, of the school their child will be attending, their teacher. I think with feedback, giving it the opportunity, and if the day's too much, then I think that that's a personal parental choice. For us to have a part-time structure and a full-time structure, I'm not sure is what we want to have to plan and budget for because that impacts everything, including, up to and including staffing, based on enrollments on the fly. So, and we know that kindergarten is, that I would call one of the most volatile numbers we project year over year, with probably second place to pre-K. So on that note, I really think that everything you're bringing forward gives us a compelling argument. I know that we are finalizing our budget based on the cost to introduce the program. We are absolutely focusing as a warrant article for this, for these expenditures, because we can't, for us to introduce a new program, just as we introduced kindergarten 12 years ago via a warrant, this is the right way to go so that the taxpayers can weigh in. It's our job as a board to advocate for our position. We will vote on the warrant, and then, you know, when we go through all our warrant articles, we'll have a vote as a board. And then through deliberative session, through our voter's guide, help to educate better why it's the right decision for Merrimack. You, as the task force, go a long way in helping us do that. Your work has been exemplary. The collaboration between administrator, classroom teacher, and parent really brings together the, all the elements we need to make a good, well-rounded decision. The data that you presented took into account your children, the school dynamic, and the taxpayer, and that's what we do as a board. So it really did hit on all those very important topics. So this is a very important decision for this community to make. I'm glad we're taking all this time to do that. The vote for the board on warrant articles will be at our next meeting, which is February 5th, but this is an important, this was important groundwork to really keep that conversation going, and if there are other questions to be asked, for the community to email and call us, call the district office, and get that information they're looking for to give them a better understanding of why this is the right time, the right place, and the right educational decision. So that's my two cents, which probably took a lot more money to cover, but that's definitely, you know, where I think we are. Michael?
Thank you. I just wanted to actually reiterate what Board Member Guami said in regards to the conversations that we've had. We've had numerous conversations with the individuals come forward and actually present, so I wanted to make sure that if anybody in the community that was coming into this conversation tonight was questioning why there weren't as many questions from the board tonight, I just want to reiterate that there have been multiple presentations where we've asked questions, and everybody's come forward and actually answered those questions numerous times. I appreciate the multiple times that you've come forward, but I also ask the community that if they want full information, to look back at some of the past meetings and actually review those also. Thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, and the same is for me. I mean, we've, I think, to a person that, when we first heard about this, I think the entire board is in support of full-day kindergarten, but there are many in the community that look at impacts of this. So we're asking the questions not because we're not in favor of it necessarily, but we need to know the big picture so we can answer the questions when people ask, so we understand the impact. So again, I appreciate everything you guys have done. It really fills it out, gives us a lot of the answers that we need, and I just want to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing them, we thank you immensely for your presentation, the time and the work you put in. We, and-
you put in. And we look forward to next steps getting it toward coming to fruition. So, some work to be done, but we're very hopeful. Thank you very much.
So, Kim, you're probably not going to be surprised to hear this, but if you can get the presentation over to the district office so we can put it on our website, that would be really appreciated. Thank you. As we're wrapping up, we will transition to item number four, and that will be the update on the math curriculum and program implementation. And I will have Mark McLaughlin introduce the topic and the presenters.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
So, as the team convenes, I'll just start by saying this. The board has asked for quarterly curriculum reviews. No. Oh, well, are we presenting a clip? No, no.
We definitely want to turn the overhead off, because it's actually, it's tough on the eyes. So, we'll have our AV specialist chevanel. Yeah.
There we go.
It's technically called a lamp. I learned that.
Excellent. Good, good. Save the site. That's important. That's very important. So, the board has asked for periodic curriculum reviews, and so, tonight, we're happy to provide that and focus on mathematics. Before we do that, I will just remind the board that we do more than one thing at a time in Merrimack, and so, while we have the math work going on, we have our new science curriculum that's continues to be implemented, and we'll be responding to you about that. We have a elementary report card committee that is meeting. We just met today, and we're going to have more to talk to you about that in the future, in addition to talking about how we're going to begin to talk to our community about that, and ongoing work at the high school with competencies, competency development, competency refinement, interdisciplinary courses. So, even though our focus tonight is mathematics, I want everybody to know that we don't just focus on one thing at a time. But, this is really important, and I will just start by saying thanks to the board for its support of our adoption of KDA8 math, and then what we're proposing, which would be adoption of secondary math support, which would include Algebra I at the middle school, and then at the high school, and Algebra II and geometry. But, right now, it's appropriate to give you an update about the implementation of our elementary through middle school program implementation. And so, I want to thank again Marsha McGill, who has done really two full-time jobs. In addition to being principal of the upper elementary school, has just been the absolute go-to person for this math work, and we just could not have done it without Marsha. So, got to say it publicly, thank you, thank you, thank you. And Marsha would be the first to say, not just Marsha, but a team of people as well. So, I'm going to turn it to you, Marsha, to introduce your team, and you can begin.
Thank you for your kind words, but it is a team effort. This evening, I'd like to introduce to you our math facilitators that are here. I'd like to first start by saying that our math facilitators are an integral part of the math committee, which has done all the work with the revision of the curriculum, the development of the evaluation, and the adoption of a new program, and now the implementation of it. So, this evening we have with us, we have Megan Donigan from Master Cola Elementary School. We have Sheri Roswag from Reed's Ferry School, and Helen Fitzgerald from the Upper Elementary School. And in addition, this evening, we have with us the, who's a very integral part of the committee also, the principal of Master Cola Elementary School, Michelle Romaine. So, first, we'd like to address some questions that came from the board. So, we'd like to start first with the implementation and how the implementation has gone in each building. So, Sheri, do you want to start?
Absolutely. Thank you for having us tonight. The first time that we were introduced to the Envision program was at August Academy, which is the beginning-of-the-year professional development time that we have. That's when the teachers were first introduced to the program. So, during this time, teachers were able to have an overview of the program. They were taken through what resources the program has, along with the technology capabilities of the program. They were allowed to actually explore the program. Then, after the training, teachers needed time to actually learn the program, use the program in their classroom, and come up with questions that they had. So, it was a really, a critical time for teachers to be able to actually use that program within their classroom, and then let us know what they needed. So, in November, we had an additional training. We did a train-the-trainer model, so a few select teachers from each of the elementary schools got together, and with a trainer from Envisions, and all of our questions were actually answered, which was pretty amazing. It was relatable to the teachers that went, because they were able to know the program, and also bring those questions up that they had, not only that they had, but other colleagues at the school. After that, for Reed's and Thornton's Ferry, who weren't able to be here tonight, we both had PLTs where our professional learning teams came together, and that's where the trainer trained the rest of the team. So, everyone heard the same exact information. All the teachers were able to see the different components of the program. We actually walked them through a complete lesson, start to finish, showing them exactly all the components that we had access to, as well as the technology components for the program. And then, after, as a facilitator for my school, I actually went through and did a brief look at, these are some really critical things that I wanted to make sure everyone heard, everyone knew, and if they needed any other questions that came up at their PLTs, they could ask me those questions, and we could work it out together, or I could contact the trainer to get more information. And now, I'm going to hand it over to Megan.
So, at Master Cola, it was a very similar setup. After our November training, we had a train-the-trainer type of model, and we utilized PLT time, a staff meeting, as well as team planning time to collaborate and give the teachers who attended the training the opportunity to share what they learned with the other teachers.
At the Upper Elementary School, our teachers that attended the training worked with their PLTs, and on a small groups, that there were that intimacy of asking questions and finding answers, and locating different parts within their teacher's edition. We also had time during math dialogues, and during technology time, so that teachers were able to come to the computer lab and access that material. In addition, we trained all the students at the Upper Elementary School to make sure that everyone was able to log-on to Envisions. So, classroom teachers brought their students down, the students logged in, set their profile pictures, saw where they could access their student editions, materials, and also the games. For parents, we were able to post all this information on the Upper Elementary School webpage under Envisions, as well as some teachers posting it within their individual webpages. In the middle school, I can share on behalf of Cheryl Smith, that she shared with us that the teachers at the middle school have had the opportunity for grade-level discussions on one and a half days so far this year. They looked at their pacing guides and their instruction with their students.
Thank you, ladies. Next, we had a question in reference to challenges in transition. So, at this time, we'd like to share that information with you. Megan?
One of the challenges that we've come across, I'm a second-grade teacher, so I can speak to this firsthand, is the format of the assessments. Types of questions that the kids are not used to seeing are, you know, questions on a computer. First of all, there's one of the assessments that you can use. It's a computer-based assessment, and some questions require the kids to scroll down and use basic computer skills, which for second graders, some of them, who may not have the technology at home, it could be a challenge. Another, you know, another challenge we came across was a question that had, like, the format choose-all that apply, so there's not necessarily one right answer. They could have to choose like two out of four, or three out of four. Again, this is a format that they weren't used to. But, you know, in response to these challenges that I've come across in the area of assessments, you know, with more experience, we've been seeing, you know, I can see in my own classroom, I can attest to that, the scores have risen, the more comfortable they've gotten with the different types of formats. So, I think, you know, I'm confident that with, over time, you know, scores will continue to increase.
At the Upper Elementary School, our challenge is really reading the question for understanding. As students are looking at a question, they, it's not a problem of 36 times 24 anymore. It's reading, reading the question. What is the question truly asking me, first of all? And then, they also have to explain their thinking, whether it be in a written form, using vocabulary, pretty much, that is the greatest challenges. What am I being asked within this question? What is all this writing, words asking me, and how do I explain my thinking? At the middle school, they share that it's the reading level of the problems that they, that they're seeing within the program, and word problem strategies.
As a first-grade teacher, our first topic is actually word problems. So, that was a challenge to go right in and expect first graders to be able to read word problems. The program has a guided practice section, as well as an independent section, and we found out that first graders cannot do word problems independently. So, instead, how are we going to adjust our instruction to meet the needs of our students? If they can't do it independently, how is that going to look? What are we going to do to help them? So, what we did was, we immediately started guided math groups, and with that, we were able to pull students to the back table, read those questions to them, and see if they could come up with strategies in order to solve them, if they were understanding the skills that were needed in order to answer the questions, and if it was just the reading that was, the part that was the challenge.
Thank you. Another question that we have was in reference to assessment and assessment data.
So, I'm going to start at the part where the summative, there's a summative assessment at the end of every topic. The main part about the summative assessment, if you were to view where students bring home samples, it is truly for application and understanding. There is quite a bit of reading, so students are looking at a problem. They have to read it, understand it, apply their thinking, and then they come across their answers. So, sometimes they may be asked to estimate, choose-all, describe the operation, what was their thinking, compare two answers, that type of application of specific topics and problem-solving. What does a teacher do with this data after they've had a summative? Is, the teachers are looking at the summative tests that the students finish, and they're looking at key problems such as, what are they missing? Are they missing the idea of estimate? So, or are they missing the part of explaining their answer thoroughly, not just, I know it? So, that type, so a teacher is moving them into different groups. They're differentiating their, their reteach, their interventions, their extensions, so that students are able to look at that assessment and say, okay, for problem one, I need to estimate. For problem number two, I'm going to estimate and explain my answer. For problem three, I'm going to choose all answers, not just one answer. And it's that type of application and understanding of the question that we're seeing that students are improving.
I'm going to talk about formative assessments a little bit, and that's to inform our teaching. So, it's a snapshot in time. So, when I think about formative assessments, there's really two formative assessments that is built into every single lesson in Envisions. The first one is our independent practice, and I know that you just heard me say that in first grade, that's challenging for students to do, but it's because of their reading level. So, I'm not actually assessing the student's ability to read. I'm looking at, were they able to solve the problem after the words have been read to them? In our program, there are, for, at the elementary level, there are specific problems that are starred, which are focus problems that go right along with that standard. So, we look at those specifically, and then we can build our guided reading groups right from there to know that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. The other one that's built right into our program, I use more as an exit slip, and I know that others in elementary are using it as an exit slip. It's called, at our level, do you understand? It's a question that refers right back to that visual learning piece. So, after you've been taught, after you've been guided through, you've had that practice on your own, do you now understand the concept that was being asked of you? Can you show it? Can you prove it in some sort of way? And this is a way that students are allowed to either write about what they understand. They can draw a picture. They can show equations. So, there's many different things that they can do in order to show that they understand that standard. So, those are built right into our program. And then, from that, we create our guided math groups, and that really supports our students. And I know Emily, not Emily, sorry, Megan's going to talk about those right now.
So, going a little bit further with the guided math groups, I can speak to, and again, second grade, during my math time, and, you know, along with all other teachers, we pull kids for a small guided math group, just a small instruction, small group instruction. What that looks like, kids come to a table with the teacher, and during that time, the teacher is, you know, leading some instruction, giving the children opportunity to practice, but also making observations, jotting down notes, and that's a form of assessment to track their progress and see how they're doing, and what, you know, they need to work more on. And we use that to differentiate instruction moving forward. I can speak to, in my classroom, I use whiteboards a lot. I'll put, at the end of our small group time, I'll pose a question to my group, and I'll give them about a minute to solve, and then they get to hold up their whiteboard. I can check in to see how they're doing, jot down some quick notes, and that helps me for when I meet with them the following day.
We hope we've answered the initial questions that you posed to us, but if you have some additional questions at this time, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. I saw Naomi, then Cinda, then Michael, then Andy.
Thank you very much for being here and being willing to bring more information. I was curious about the first-grade reading that you mentioned. I was curious whether that was something that had implications outside of the assessment piece, whether you're finding that the reading level for the math part of the curriculum is a mismatch in any of the rest of the curriculum, or simply in that assessment piece?
I can speak to second grade. At second grade, we also find some challenges with the readability of the assessments. And so, how we are able to, you know, tackle that is, I actually read the assessment aloud to the students, and so, we do it together. For my friends who are able to do it independently, I send them off to do it, but my friends who need that extra support with that, I read it aloud as a whole group, and we do it together.
Cinda, then Michael, then Andy.
One of the things I'm wondering about the reading for assessment is if that will improve? improve, should full-day kindergarten be implemented? I'm wondering if these, these assessments were made, when you look at the country as a whole, and you look at what the, what kind of rigor to put into a program, then you might base it on the, the foundation that the general student might get in kindergarten. So that's just one thought that I had that I was interested in your thoughts on.
It's probably a good time to point out again that the Envisions program is designed for kindergarten and full day. So our kindergartners are getting exposure to Envisions 2.0. They are not getting all of the components that are designed for every day. So hopefully, that would have an impact on the readability for some of our students.
So it makes sense what Mrs. Rothberg was saying about what she noticed with the students coming into first grade, that that, that kind of makes sense based on the program in and of itself. I also wanted to thank you for coming. One of the things, I think, as a district and as a board, when we fund something like this and we make a big change like this, and I know that internally you do that, but it's important, I think, for the public to hear as well as us, that there's an assessment and evaluation process, and that we're working to continue to improve and optimize not only what programs and curriculum that we offer, but how it's implemented, how it's assessed, and, and how we continue, because it's, it's never done, right? We implement something and you're always looking for, how do we teach it better? How do we do it better? So to come now before us and tell us some of these pieces is really important, particularly for such a core subject matter, and so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. My question's regarding the program implementation. So you talked a little bit about how teachers got access or got trained right before school. So my question would be, is, is there anything that you might have changed in regards to that, in regards to allowing the teachers to maybe have access prior to during the summer? And also, after it was implemented and started during the, the training, after, after it was deployed, did the teachers have a little flexibility to still use some of the past resources in, in conjunction with the new resources that they actually transitioned?
I, I think with any program that you have, it's a resource that you have or that you use to help support the curriculum. And teachers use whatever resources they have available to them. There are many resources that are available in the program, but there are always additional materials and resources that teachers will use to help support their daily teaching or their intervention or extension lessons. So definitely.
I appreciate that. That just shows that obviously it's, it's not just a, a go with what you have, but also obviously a transition. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, I think Mark has something to add on this as well.
So, Michael, you asked about training in the summer and whether that might have... Right. So just as a practical matter, we can't require teachers to be here in the summer, and so that wasn't feasible. But we, won't surprise you to know that we talked a little bit about tonight, and when we were meeting earlier today, we were talking about the fact that, as with most things that are new to people, at a certain point, it's, it's important to like do it. So I think that what we kind of agreed is that the training in August was really important and very helpful to teachers, and even if it had been three more days, there wouldn't have been a substitute for actually getting in front of live people and, and working it. So the training that happened in November actually probably was the more meaningful training, not to say that August wasn't, but the more meaningful training, because then teachers actually had experience factor, and they could say, this is not working, or this isn't working like I thought it would work, or this is working great, how can I optimize it? And then the trainer was really able to zone in and, and provide assistance. So it's, it's a great question you ask, and, and I think that what we've learned from this is that there's no substitute. Whatever the it is we're talking about, there's no substitute for doing it, and then being able to, you know, find out how to do it better. So that's, that's, I think we probably pretty much agree, that's what we've learned.
No, I appreciate that clarification, and, and I understand that there's, you can't do a requirement of any teacher training during the summer and not expecting that. I, I just was wondering if there's a way to provide acts, if you provide access to the teachers to self-learn or at least review, knowing that the program was coming forward, if the teacher themselves wanted to kind of absorb some of that information in the summertime, so.
We would have had the materials that we had for the evaluation through the year, even though every teacher didn't, wasn't involved in that evaluation. Those materials were in the building, those teachers were sharing with their professional learning teams, what the materials looked like, the access on the technology to the program. So those things were available for teachers to be able to peruse through or, if they'd want to take it home over the summer and read the text, I'm sure they, we would have been happy to, to give them that.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Megan?
Megan, oh, hi.
I can attest to the fact that you can read it as much, you know, as many times as possible, but until you're actually living it and teaching it, it's a very different experience. So I really feel like having, you know, that time to, you know, be with my students and see how, you know, that interaction piece, because they really dictate the curriculum, what they need. So by having that, I feel like by the training in November, I was really able to, you know, ask meaningful questions and get the most out of that training. Thank you.
Good. While we're, while we're on this subject though, could, could somebody maybe just briefly describe some of the teacher resources that are part of the package that we got, and how you would maybe avail yourself of them, and what they consist of, and how readily available or not they are?
So one of the neat things after we were trained in November with Melissa was the technology piece. So you can, you can, as a teacher or, or a student, you can go online, and you can view the teacher text online, the students can view their text online, the teacher can look at the materials, read all that, and print any pages online. Likewise can students. So if a student forgets their homework, they are, they know how to get into their Pearson, put on page 34, and hit Ctrl P, and they can print their, their work. The other part is, is for a teacher, she can set aside videos. So you can go into Envisions, and there's videos within the program that teaches a teacher how to teach a topic first, and then, you know, some of the key vocabulary that they should be mentioning to their students. The, the students can go on and, and look at videos, but at the same time, a teacher can go, and it had two types of videos for teachers. So there were the Pearson videos, but then you could go to what was called Open Ed. And these were videos that were aligned with Khan Academy, Teacher, Teachers, Teacher Tube, or, or from YouTube where you could actually, they've been pre-watched, watched, and you could explain fractions, so that if you wanted to show a video on fractions, you had, oh, eight to 10 different videos that you could choose from that you felt would explain the, the concept of fractions. So Melissa showed us that, and then you can set it aside. So I can create my content, go into fractions, say, oh, I really like this video from Khan Academy. I can save the link so that when I come back there next year, it's already part of my teacher box within Pearson's Envisions. So the teachers really enjoyed the tech piece, and you didn't have to write down the URL, it was already part of your program.
Yes?
I would be happy to host any of you, all of you in my classroom, so that you'd be able to see the resources and practice, and see the kids really, you know, using the games and the different resources that this program has to offer. So invitation is extended.
Thank you.
I think that invitation is for any one of the math facilitators, or even at any school. I know that the teachers would love to have you come in and just watch a lesson, watch part of a lesson, walk through a couple different classrooms to see what are they doing. You'll see some amazing things.
Thank you all. I'm trying to think, it was Michael, then it was Andy, then, and we're good. Okay, so I'm caught up. Okay. A lot of dialogue, it's yours.
Going around the table. So again, I'd like to thank for, for coming and giving the update. And it's probably too early to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway to plant the seed. So with the old math curriculum, there was a lot of parental feedback that either the, you know, the everyday math, the mixing of things, it was hard for parents to understand, it wasn't teaching things. Have you received any parental feedback yet, anecdotally through conferences or something, as to what parents are thinking of the program? Or how do you, how do you anticipate that you'll get that feedback from parents? Because at the end of the day, we're, we're delivering a, a product, the education of students, and the parent, parents' viewpoint as to whether it's successful or not is a key component of that. So I'm just curious how you might go about that part.
I think the first opportunity that we've had have been parent conferences in the fall. So I think that was the first opportunity for parents, if they had some questions, you know, to talk with the teacher. I think we get responses from kids every day, but parents, we have to wait for that call unless we go out and solicit it. So we've asked our teachers to share the information with how to access through their child, the resources that are available to help generate that conversation in the fall. We'll do that again in the spring, and I think once we can become that much more familiar with the program and confident, it would be nice to offer some other opportunities for parents to be able to see the resources for the program and learn a little bit more about it. I think we're still learning the program right now.
Right. That's why I said it's probably early, but I think one of the things that we need to, it's very helpful when you do these new programs, is to get that sort of cyclical feedback, that if you do need to blend components into it, you know where you may need to augment, and not only from an educational perspective, but maybe from a parental perspective as well. So I just want to make sure that this is as open in getting input from all directions as we can make it, since we're starting sort of from scratch, so.
I can comment upon that a little bit. We just recently had parent conferences, like March just said, and I know, being a first grade teacher, some of the parents were really surprised at the, their own child's ability to recognize the vocabulary words and use those vocabulary words when they're at home, and be like, Mom, no, I'm trying to find the sum right now, I'm not trying to find the difference. So just being able for them to recognize that and use that, parents were really surprised about that. And I also had another parent share with me that her child really knows, like, why the answer, so six plus four equals 10. The child really understands why, and they can not just share, well, one way, well, I count it in my head, or I just know, but the child could use a tent frame to actually show. The student could hop on a number line to actually show the parent. So not only are the students learning these different processes and different strategies that we have to teach these skills, but the parents are learning right along with them. And I think that's pretty neat for a first grader to be like, no, Mom, doubles plus two is when you have, and they can explain what type of problem that is to their parents. And the parent's like, oh, I never looked at it that way.
Interestingly, you say that you talk about vocabulary. So my wife teaches honors geometry in high school, and the kids get freaked out because they get asked vocabulary questions, because you've got to know all the terms in geometry. And for them to start learning it in first grade and building it up is, I think it's great, because it prepares them that much better for the realities, it's not just numbers when you do math, so.
Yeah, Mark?
So just off of that, you know, we have a communications committee, and the communications committee is always talking about ways that we can, whatever the subject is, whatever the particular issue is, whether it's the school calendar or, you know, whatever, how do we continue to get better at soliciting feedback? And so the issue of generating feedback from parents is bigger than math. It's, it's really part of what we're really trying to undertake in the communications committee. And so as a result of some of the ideas that have generated from that, we're absolutely, you know, going to use the, the tools that we have at our disposal to continue to, to generate that feedback. As far as specific information goes, I would just anecdotally say, because it's anecdotal at this point, because it's still so, so new, but a little surprise probably at the rigor, not in a bad way, but in a, I didn't necessarily think that a first grader or whatever could necessarily do this kind of way. And what we find is that our students constantly surprise us about what they're able to do when presented with challenges. And that, I might say, is true for kindergarten, and I think that if we're fortunate enough to be able to have full-day kindergarten, we're going to surprise ourselves and our community with just what students are capable of doing when provided with a structure to do it. And, and so that was one. And, and then sort of along with that, and I think our educators mentioned it, but is a, is a surprise about some of the, it's a heavily language-based program, a lot of the vocabulary, and not an insurmountable problem. I think all our folks would say it's a, you recognize the challenge, and then again, students rarely ever disappoint. And we certainly have teachers in our district that are up to the challenge of, of meeting the students' needs and their rising abilities. You know, as we raise the rigor, they can meet us. So many of them can. So just anecdotally, those are some of the, that's some of the feedback I've heard.
So that's really great to hear that, because it's, it's that feedback mechanism, I think we really are looking for as a, as a, as a board, as a district. But you raised a question that just all of a sudden occurred to me. You raised a point that brought a question is, so somebody starting in first grade or second grade, building through the program, is going to get that rigor in the earlier grades. But we're also implementing this at the fourth grade, at the fifth grade, at the sixth grade, where that rigor hasn't necessarily been built in the previous ones. So how do you insert somebody, how do they jump on that freight train after it's been going for a few stops and not get lost, but still be able to learn through the program?
So I will, I'll just start, and then I'll invite my, my colleagues who really know this better than I, but I would, I would just start by saying that by commenting on the rigor of this program, I don't mean to imply that the previous program was not rigorous. The previous program also, I would say, provided us with a platform to begin to really talk about what application in mathematics means. I think my colleagues would agree with that. And so, so I don't mean to suggest that the transition is easy, and I think there are probably some content gaps and, or, and knowledge gaps, and I'm sure my colleagues can speak to it. But I, I wouldn't want anybody to think that we went from a non-rigorous program to a rigorous program, rigorous in a different way. But I for one think that it's, it was the opening for a level of discourse around math understanding that has allowed us to, to do, to do what we're doing now. That's what I would, but, so.
The work that we've done before also was a standards-based, it's also a program that had a lot of rigor. It had a lot of vocabulary that was with it, reading, word problems, performance tasks. So it, it helped to support students, and this program will just continue on with that. And this program really has a great deal of not only just the application of it, but also the true understanding of it, and we feel that's really important, you know, for students. And it has so many things, you know, resources that are built into it to help us differentiate for students. I think teachers are great at scaffolding for, for children and really saying, okay, where is this child? What am, what am I teaching? What is it saying? What do I already know about them? And then what do I need to do with either this resource or previous resources or additional resources that they have? Because they're always searching for that best practice and instruction.
I think it's important that you're saying that, because to somebody listening casually, you would think that it's, it's a different enough program that, that kids that didn't start off were missing something. And, and I think it's important, as you brought out, that it's not as though this is completely new, it's changing the way you do it with more resources, so that you can adapt kids at any point into it. But I ask the question partially for my own knowledge, but partially because I'm sure there's people asking that same question, so.
Of course.
And I appreciate you ask it, because it provides an opportunity to say. I also want to compliment our teachers. We're very lucky in Merrimack to have teachers who are as good at differentiating instruction as they are. This is not a new skill for our teachers. So whether the reason to differentiate is because we have a new program, or because we have a new student coming in from a different place who's learned in a different way or with different materials... or with different materials. Or because as a student evolves, things that used to be easy for them, for whatever reason or not. And so we have long since established a culture, and our teachers have embraced it across the schools and across the grades, at being able to look at a student as an individual. And whatever the reason is that a student might be struggling, the idea of differentiating instruction to match students' need with a skills, with an instructional approach that can achieve is not new. And not new to these people. And these are just a few people. Imagine a sea of other teachers who are not here tonight who are just as good as these folks. And so that I would just also say to our community is, has nothing to do with Envisions 2.0, but it has everything to do with the ability of our human resources to tackle a problem and just meet it head-on with whatever strategies they can employ, whatever resources they have at their disposal to make it work.
Are there any other questions, comments about math?
It's, I think the most, you know, as a parent of two high schoolers, I remember, you know, going back to school nights and I was in the everyday math era, obviously. But it's all about, you know, making everyone comfortable with, and this is a first year. You know, teachers are definitely going to get their hands around this, but make everyone comfortable and settled in the program. How do you support your child in math? Knowing how you learned it may not be the way your child is learning it in school. And the best, finding that best way to support your child at home. And I think, you know, what I always say is for parent-teacher conferences, they're not supposed to be a catch-up. They're supposed to be a check. So if you have, you know, if your parents have kids at home, you want to support them, they have questions, you want to help them to reinforce what they're learning in the classroom, I think the teachers are there all year round for that dialogue. And I think that's important for parents to understand is, you know, they are an important part of the learning team. You know, and whatever supports they need, it doesn't need to wait until parent conferences to get that dialogue with your teacher. It's, you know, and, you know, the more your child is excited about math, I think the better their success story will be. As we're talking with full-day kindergarten, we're talking with this new Envisions program for the lower grades. It really does go across all subject matters. So, you know, where your child needs the support, you know, keep that dialogue with your teacher, keep that dialogue with your child. And be, you know, and we're all here to be a true partner in education. So, you know, it doesn't have to be twice a year. It can be whenever the need arises. And teachers have emails. They have phone extensions. You know, get in touch. You don't have to wait until those report cards in those parent conference times. So that's always something that's a good reminder, so.
Michael?
I just wanted to add to your point of that the communication to the teachers is readily available out there. But I would like to also just to extend that allow the teachers ample time during the normal working hours of a teacher, they cannot respond because they are not near a computer or anything like that. So some parents have said, why doesn't my teacher get back to me quicker? It's not that. Just give them a day or around, a little bit more than that to respond, so that's all. But great examples. Thank you.
That's right. We hope they're with children during the day and teaching.
They're children. So on that note, absolutely. You know, we've always tried set expectations, and I know that a lot of your teachers have teacher sites as well. So how to get ahold of them, there's usually tips on the easiest and fastest way as well, so, for those teachers that have sites. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for dialogue. And whatever feedback you're getting, we're very interested to hear how that's going, so. And we appreciate the work that you're doing, the rolling out of this new program. We're excited about it, and I think it's definitely something that we have been supportive of for a very long time. So we thank you very much.
Okay. And now we're on to item number five, which is the board's final response to the proposed 2018-2019 school district budget. So we have gone through every departmental budget. We went through and said what would cuts look like if we felt cuts were necessary as a board. And on that note, at this point, it's our time to bring the budget before, to move forward. So before we do that, are there any adjustments to the budget that we as a board are looking to make? I feel like it's, you know, the tell-the-truth thing or who's going to stand up. So Andy, are you taking this one? Or Michael? It was a tie, so.
Well, I'm going to do a proposal, and then we'll talk about it.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
So are you moving something?
I'm going to move something to start.
Okay.
Is that all right? Okay. I'd like to move that we decrease, that we, my movement is, is based on three items in the tier-one cuts in our sheet. The first three items, the 2440 calculation error from the Thornton's Ferry reading text account and the $10,000 from the tutor salary accounts from the high school, the two ones for a total of 20,000, $22,440. I'd like to move that we remove that from the operating budget.
Is that a second, Michael? Second. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I mean, personally, in going through the cut list that we did the last meeting, once you got below those three items, which appeared to be low impact to the district, you started cutting things that were either critical to infrastructure. You didn't touch instruction. You were really good about that. But things that indirectly would impact instruction, things like, you know, stools and cafeteria tables and things like that. And then as you went further down the program, you did start to cut things that would impact in instructional situations, and in particular, when you got to the bleachers. So for me, those top three things were things that it felt you could live with, but also showed a little bit of removal. So that's the reason I did the proposal.
Are there any other discussions to the motion? Michael?
I agree with Board Member Schneider in regards to, obviously, the clerical error. That's obviously an easy one. I do appreciate the administration going back and looking further back in regards to the tutor cost and actually seeing that there was an opportunity there to lower each item. Additionally, going beyond those items, I think, could be a challenge, not only for the administration, but also possibly for future costs. We've seen in the past where we've actually delayed equipment being replaced, where the cost has gone up dramatically year over year. I think it is prudent to replace items when they're needed and also take an opportunity to get them at a more cost-effective way. Thank you.
Any other comments on the proposed cut? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Are there any other adjustments to be made to this budget? Cinda?
Not necessarily at this time, but I do possibly. I wanted to open up a discussion about the co-curricular, the level fund, the account. It's a tier-two cut for $4,600. I wanted to discuss through the impacts of that, that may be a cut that I might possibly want to make a motion regarding.
Okay. So with co-curriculars, I know that the question was, we weren't spending the 100% of what we did year over year. The board has had a position in prior years of level funding. So, you know, taking that reduction would probably move it closer to actual, but wouldn't give it the parity necessarily or the opportunity to be fully spent. So that's essentially where you're at. What's the right choice for the board to make? Does anyone else have thoughts on how that's been expended? Where the board's position is and what we feel this might be for this year? Andy? And then Michael?
So.
Okay.
So co-curricular is one of those, transportation's one of those areas that's relatively new to the budget. It's only been two, I think this is the third year we've seen it show up. And our original bogey was to make it equivalent to the athletic transportation. But we also started seeing lists of co-curricular activities, expansion of it. Some co-curriculars might not be aware of the transportation. So I saw the budget that they presented around this as an opportunity to seed it a little bit more to see if there was other transportation opportunities that could be done. To me, I see this as sort of, the cement is still hardening around the co-curricular transportation. Because if we don't spend it, we return it. I see this as a low-risk item. I could go either way, but I don't see an issue with it being there, just based on what I, my observations, so.
Matthew?
I think I kind of echo your thoughts. Because after years of being close to the line and being under a restrictive kind of budget as far as transportation goes, I think it takes a few years to realize that, yes, you do indeed have that money. Yes, you do indeed have these increased opportunities by the infusion of money into this transportation line to put it with equivalency with athletic transportation time. And then I think, you know, just give it a few more years to see, you know, how the programs go in order to take advantage of it. So I agree with what Vice Chair Schneider said, and that was my thoughts, too.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you. What I was going to say is that since it is fairly new still to the school district, and we are trying to propose a budget that is 18 months out, you know, we still have a half of a school year to actually, or sorry, were you shaking your head? Since we still have a half a year for possibly new things to come forward or anything like that, I think it does allow for growth within the program at this point. I'm not saying that there will be or won't be, but I think that it allows for some flexibility as we're still looking at what this program's going to look like.
I am going to put the student rep on the spot because he and I know some of the same things. As a chop shopper, which I know you are, my son was a chop shopper last year. You are kind of giving away with the wardrobe tonight. So I do know that last year, the team did regional competitions. They didn't go to nationals. And you want to take over?
Yeah, well, at Chop Shop, we do regionals every year, and that's how we get to the higher championships. Like, I don't know what they call it. Don't they call it a district champ? But I might be wrong on that, and they'll get one of the captains yelling at me if I am, but. So we go to that, and that is in Hartford. That was in UNH last year, but the year we actually went to it, it was in Hartford, Connecticut. So that's like three hours away. And then the championship this year, the 2017 championship was actually just right in Manchester, but it's in Detroit next year. So you need, we need transportation to that, too, usually. And the year we actually went to the world champs was in St. Louis. So.
Right. And I know there's like Pine Tree, there's Worcester.
Pine Tree's three hours away, yeah.
Yeah, so you're doing overnight stays because they're two-to-three-day competitions.
Yeah, we're going to like Bridgewater and stuff this year, which is like, you don't want to drive up and down every day.
Right. So on that note, those are coming out of student pockets. Those, they go four to a room, and it's a couple hundred bucks for them to do regional competitions, or else they can't go if they can't cover it. So I know that that's still areas where, how to advocate for the funding and all that. If there's funding left over that hasn't been identified, that there's still a lot of co-curricular teams are doing a lot of out-of-pocket expenditures to do what you would call standard competition. So I think this is an example of why I would probably not support it. Marge?
I was just going to say, I appreciate discourse on this. However, notice that we put it in tier-two, not tier-one. And you've come to have early regard for how we tier off. If you wanted to take another $4,000, I would ask you to go to maintenance, to either painting or striping or whatever, because it won't technically affect a student. And in this particular case, one of the board's real goals is to promote students being in academic competition. I think that is something that boards, for the last three years up to the current board, have really stressed because we have, over the past, been good at athletics, and we haven't had as much academic competition. So I think it really took a lot for us to put this down on the page because we know this is something that it took the board a long time to get it like you wanted it. I mean, there was a lot of talk and deliberation about how to try and make it equivalent to the athletic line item. So we put it down because you can see we were having a hard time trying to get to a level-funded budget. So that's the only reason it went down. But if you feel the need to make another draw, I would take you to maintenance, a maintenance item.
Okay.
I will be making a motion. I have no further comments.
So with the first motion, well, first, let's start with way back in the day, around Thanksgiving time. We got our budget books. And what was presented to us was a budget of $74,811,400. I'm sorry, $74,833,856. Tonight, a cut was made of $22,440, which brings the budget to date at $74,811,416. So that's where we're at now with the motions made and approved tonight. Are there any other proposed cuts to come before the board? Any additions? Because I should probably ask that, too. Seeing none. I know. Chris is like, really? Have to ask. So on that note, right now, our budget is $74,811,416. I would entertain a motion if someone would like to make it. Michael?
I make a motion that the board approves the budget for the 2018-19 school year of $74,811,416.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Andy. So with that, I think we vetted it quite heavily, quite frequently. And we even started in the summer researching some of those large-ticket items that came before us during this process. With that, if there are any questions between now and deliberative session, we welcome it. But at this point, we should probably take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. So the budget has been put forward, and we will be doing our warrant articles at our next meeting. Again, we have not had public, as we moved $74,811,416, we did to an empty room. But that doesn't mean that the conversation has to end. Please email us. Please call us if there are questions of particular nature that we can answer. We will get resources from the district to assist us. But we need to make sure that as we put a budget forward, that every opportunity is afforded to our community, our taxpayer, to have that dialogue and get that Q and A they need because we just haven't had it in this setting. So. Cinda?
I'm wondering if you could take a second and just outline some of the next steps with the budget as far as if there's any dates that we know for the Budget Committee and so on.
Right. So the Budget Committee, actually, I'm going to defer to Matt. So I prefer to put him on the spot. It's fun. So we have put forward our budget, and the Budget Committee is also in meeting mode. And they have their budget meetings set so far, as well as their liaison assignments. So the Budget Committee will be meeting with different building heads. They have different members of the Budget Committee meeting with those and becoming the resident experts on their area of the budget. And then they will have the building department heads come before the Budget Committee to present their budget and answer any questions through their live hearings. And did I buy you enough time, Matt, to give you those dates?
Yeah, it starts, first meeting is on the 23rd of January, when we start off. And I don't, I'm looking up the meeting schedule right now. Okay, yeah, January 23rd, January 30th, February 1st is a snow date. February 6th would be their warrant articles and work session. February 8th would be a snow date. February 13th would be a work session. The public hearing and final budget actions and committee recommendations would be on February 13th at 7:30, with the 15th is a snow date. And the work session, public hearing, final budget actions, and committee recommendations would be on the February 15th. So they're pretty much start at the 23rd, and they'll be done by February 15th.
Okay.
Yep.
So seeing that, I think we have a budget to put forward. It is now the Budget Committee's budget to work with. And we welcome questions from them, too. So I guess we are on to item number six, which is establishing the date for the deliberative session. And I turn it over to Marge.
Thank you. So one of the things that people are asking is also about when the deliberative session will be. And so, as you can see in the communique that I gave you, by statute, our deliberative session needs to occur between March 3rd and March 10th. I am proposing that the deliberative session be Wednesday, March 7th, with a backup date of March 8th. And as you can see, also, the moderator, Lynn Christensen, has been contact, contacted the district clerk, Pat Heinrich, and legal counsel, Kathy Peel, all are able to be in attendance. So the question is, is that a good date for all of you, or do we need to look at something else within that window?
I'll go, Cynda, first.
I was just saying, the dates are good for me.
Yeah. Not so much. It came to light last Friday afternoon. The first thing I did was I called the superintendent's office to make sure that I understood what dates were available for deliberative session. It has to be that week. I do have to travel to Sonoma, California for work, and it is, I travel twice a year, and this has become the first range of dates. And the second range of dates is in April, and I think it was after elections last year anyway, so I'm not too worried. But it does interfere with the proposed, the proposed date. So I, basically, I haven't even booked my flights yet, but I know that I won't be going to be able to go to the airport until the red-eye at midnight that Wednesday night into Thursday morning. So my goal is, instead of flying back Thursday during the day, is to take the red-eye back and get here for midday on Thursday, because it's not, it's not going to be a direct flight. There's just none from where I'll be working. So I am available Thursday, and I know, based on some of the things that we're bringing forward, I usually don't try to be about me, but I have to ask that my schedule be considered, and if we can move the date to Thursday, and that, whether that can be done, that might be very beneficial. Michael?
I'm in favor of either date, moving it to the 8th, in favor, in favor of your travel. Just the question would be, is that, you stated it had to be that week?
It does. So the, the snow date would be Friday.
Would be Friday. Okay.
Which, also, I mean, technically, you can have deliberative session meetings on Saturdays. We've never, as a community, done that, and I don't think we want to start.
I understand travel, so I, I do appreciate it, and...
It's rare. It's so rare for me. So it blew my mind when it came up. So I'm sorry about that. Mike, Andy?
So, just a procedural question. So if we move it to Thursday with a backup date being Friday, and you find that your flights are delayed, so you wouldn't be there for Thursday, would that cause it to kick to Friday, or would we have it anyway on Thursday? I'm just, I'm curious of the process, that's all.
I believe, once we've posted that up, we would stick with it.
Right.
I mean, especially because the backup is supposed to be for inclement weather. I mean, that's the way it's stated. So that's why, right now, you become the most important to me about your being present. I still have three people to ensure can be there, or, you know, to make sure we have legal counsel and so on. So that'll happen tomorrow.
With profound apologies, of course.
No, understood.
So would that be amenable to you? And obviously, if my flights get delayed and I can't make it, I'll communicate throughout, you know, the friendly skies to let you know what's going on.
Assuming there's Wi-Fi.
Assuming there's Wi-Fi, at least at the layover that gets laid over. But, you know, because we're talking worst-case scenario. But my goal is to overextend myself to try to make it back for deliberative session. I will be one tired cookie, but I'll do it. Are we good with Thursday, Friday? If we can just see if everyone else is available, their flexibility is appreciated by me, so thank them for me. Chris?
If it does get pushed to Friday, I believe there's a robotics competition that weekend, so I probably wouldn't be able to make it.
Okay.
But I hope I can.
Excellent. Well, you'll report back on what happens to the robotics competition, then. I mean, like, everything offline, too. So, both of my kids are in robotics now, so, kind of a joke. But, excellent. So, thank you for the accommodation. We're on to item number seven, which is the board's response to the proposed New Hampshire School Board Association resolutions. A couple things. Naomi is our delegate. Cynda is our alternate. So have, you can both register direct. We don't have to go through the district, because it's no cost, to the district event. So if you could both register online, that would be great. I know Naomi is fading. She's a little under the weather, so I definitely am, you know, counting on the backup, and, because I cannot be a delegate, based on my role. So if you guys can register, we're good. Are there any proposed positions alternate to the board's, Executive Board's position? Michael?
So after reviewing the resolutions, I looked at number 13, which is on page five. At first, the resolution that was submitted by the Hampstead School Board was not accepted, or not, not looked to be accepted by the NHSBA, but they also did propose an alternative resolution. And if you read the alternative resolution, NHSBA supports amending pertinent electioneering statutes to clarify, one, the definition of election official, two, the electioneering of by-election officials may not occur at a polling place, and three, that a public body may firmly promote positions established by formal actions of the body. My concern is with number two, that electioneering by-election officials may not occur at a polling place. If you actually look at RSA 659:43, it is clear what a polling place is considered, and it's already established a set guideline of where you could electioneer at a polling place. So it has to be away, 10 feet away. So the concern I have here is that it's stating that it can't occur at a polling place. So technically, if this is a polling place, nowhere on the grounds of the school district, or school grounds could you actually electioneer. I think that goes against what the RSA is already in place, since you can electioneer in a strict spot outside, which I think the people looking to be elected should be able to be given. So I'm strongly against number 13, as the resolution is put forward.
Andy?
So I see what you're saying, but they're very specific about talking about an election official, which to me talks about somebody that's running the election versus somebody that's running for a position that might be doing out to the side. So I, I don't know how the other RSA talks in terms of terminology. Does it use the phrase "election official" in the same vein?
So, I guess, to me, like, so, are you, the election official is not defined, either. So, so could it be construed that I am an election official because I am being elected? Or, I understand what you're saying. I think that the vagueness is...
But the first part says, "NHSBA supports amending the pertinent electioneering statutes to clarify what the definition is of an election official." Right? So I think that, I think that what they, what, the way I read this is they're looking to try to build some structure around this aspect without limiting it, right? It just seems like they're trying to make the sausage, as opposed to what the sausage is going to look like. That's, that's the way I read this. So I'm...
Okay. Cynda?
I read it similarly. I think of election official as someone who's officiating the election versus an election candidate. So it does sound like they're trying to put some more bones around what that process is, how it's defined, and what it looks like. So I, I don't have an issue with the wording and the alternate res, and the alternate resolution.
Okay. Naomi?
Mike, is that something that it would be worth asking for clarification about prior to a vote? Would that help what you're saying?
I'm not, I'm not sure if we actually have time at this point before. But, I mean, to me, I guess it's still, it's asking for definition of something, but not asking to define it either. So...
I meant the discussion prior to the vote itself at the, because we can't ask. We can, we can discuss it there.
You can always ask for clarification. And then the second thing is, when it comes to a resolution, what that is, is a platform on which our, our executives at NHSBA, who are hired to represent our interests, will, will lobby off of, or, or work off of, as far as representing our interests. So with that, they are, they're attorneys, well, there's two of the three are attorneys, and one is a director of public policy, who has worked in that space for a number of years, and actually, I believe our superintendent knows this person quite well, and has a history in education. So with that, I think as they're, they're expressing the body's position, they'll do so within RSA requirements, knowing they are specialists in that field. So I don't have concern about how they would represent us in that. And they would be the ones who would have actually vetted the legality of the alternate resolution before allowing us to vote on it. Michael?
So I guess, in, again, it might be the definition of what an elected official is, but I can see it being defined that, since one of us has to, the school board members that are actually on the board have to validate and sign the actual ballots, that could be construed as an elected official, election official. And that's kind of part of my concern, is that that would eliminate people from being out there and electioneering for other school board members, or anything like that. So that's, I understand what you're saying by election official, but technically, any one of us could actually be an elected official, therefore, we'd not be able to actually electioneer for anything that's, or somebody else that's on that. So I think it's limit, it's, without the definitive, the definition of what the election official is, and I couldn't find it, so I was going based off of just what my understanding was. So I think that, again, I'm just not for the wording the way it is, and it's still very vague.
Okay. And I would say that the things that were discussed at the board meeting regarding that were things regarding putting forward a new building, not about people. So I want, you know, and actually, that's relevant for us this year. We want to be able to talk about why we're supporting this new building. Is that electioneering, if we're discussing our position on that? If we're doing it in the room where the ballot booths are, then yes, that's inappropriate. If we're doing it in the allocated space outside of that, technically, no, it's, it's not. And it's also very cautious about, you know, what's in the voter's guide, and making sure that that, that language, as we're authoring it, per se, is within guidelines. So I saw there was, I think, your hands up, and then Cynda's hands up. Was there anyone else? Okay.
So I think that actually goes back to my first concern, is that it says "at polling place." It doesn't, doesn't say "at polling place," or "defined by" 659:43. So that, that's my, my larger concern, is that it's actually restricting further.
Right. Well, the polling place would be the place in which you would actually cast your vote. Right now, the middle school is a couple of things. It's a school, and only one room is a polling place.
Well, actually, technically, if you actually look at the guidelines by the state, it says, "At the polling place are there spots for parking for vans," you know? So it actually extends based off of the actual stuff by its state statutes beyond just the building itself. It also includes the grounds.
So, and I'm not sure I'm following that that would be a concern, because at the polling place, which means the room in which you vote, can they get there, park, and vote? The parking is not a polling place. The place in which you cast your ballot is the polling place. Just making sure you could get to it.
So, so as I read it, and like, the guidelines, and stating if your polling place, you know, is your polling place set up for elections, it extends it to the grounds that it's on, and parking, and everything like that. So I would consider that the polling place as a whole. So I, I mean, I'm cutting hairs. You can vote, and I'll, if we vote on it, I'll just say no, and you guys can say yes, but I'm voicing my concerns about this one, that's all.
That's fine. So you are moving to not support the proposed amendment. Is that your motion?
I, I don't see that I'm actually supported by others here, so I'll let someone else take, take a movement for whether we're supporting this as a whole, and I'll take my action at that point.
I'll make the motion for the sake of argument. So I move that we don't, for the sake of argument, that we don't accept Resolution 13. Is there a second? Seconded by Cynda.
For the sake of discussion, I will second the motion on the table.
Okay. So, again, my, you know, the one thing I don't want to do as a board, so I'm getting kind of into a different area, but if we feel there's a position to be had, and even if you don't, even if I don't have the majority votes, vetting the position and having a position is okay. I don't want people to feel that if, you know, if you can't win the game, don't, don't field the team. So I do want to discuss it. I want to make sure that we vet it. And, you know, if it's a 1-4-0, it's, I've had my fair share of them, but at least we vetted it. And I just want to make sure we have that platform to do that. So I don't agree with the concern, but I do respect your reason for having that concern. So I wanted to get it to a, to a proper end, whether it be a pro or a con. But that's important for us to do. I don't think it's a concern, because I do think that the polling place is the room in which we vote. If I tried to do anything about talking about our building, talking about who to vote for, talking about, you know, all those things that we've presented in our budget, I would, I would feel that's inappropriate. Anywhere outside of that, in an area that's considered not within range of that site for influence at, in the booth, I would be fine with. So I'm not seeing the concern, but I appreciate the vetting of the concern. Cynda?
One of the reasons that I second it for discussion is, I could potentially have seen a motion that said, please accept, you know, we support all of these as presented, which then wouldn't have singled out the particular item
Okay.
that Board Member Thompson had a concern with. So...
Okay. Naomi?
I do see the point that's being made. I'm wondering if there's any way to find out what the definition of polling place is, beyond our opinions of what the definition of polling place is.
Um...
Could just be that I'm wrong.
So honestly, I think that if we want to reach out and ask Barrett Christina, it's something worthy of discussion, because remember, we're still going to have elections, and if we can refine our practices, it's still a healthy discussion and worthy of why we're doing it. Marge?
I don't know whether Barrett would know this, but what occurs to me, as you're deliberating about this, is what was the prompt for the Hampstead School Board? In other words, something went on, or something was a concern for them to raise it up. So it's, what's the prompt? I mean, that's the same thing I say when a legislator goes forward with a bill. What caused you to put this forward? And sometimes finding that out really is a clarifier. So I'm not sure whether we can find that out, or if Barrett would know it, but I would think that that would be terribly important to the, to the delegate, delegates.
Absolutely. And I'm sure we can reach out, get his, his context on it, and with that, just get back to you. And honestly, even if it doesn't affect what we do at the Delegate Assembly, it can affect what we do as a board. So it's, it's still healthy conversation. Michael?
I mean, to that point, just reading over what the Hampstead School Board, and I'm making an assumption here, obviously, further clarification would be good, but it, it talks more about, not limited to telephones, fax imming machines, vehicles, and computers. So it's, it's a lot different than what actually is being proposed by the NHSBA, if I see it also. So, so I think that you make a good, valid point of what was the intent and what was the outcome, because, again, that's actually what made me read a little bit further, was the intent of that, and then further on, what saw the resolution proposed. And I don't see that they're actually connected, but again, I'm just going based off of what we're reading here.
Okay. So on that note, we have a motion on the floor. So all those in favor of not accepting Resolution 13, signify by saying aye. One opposed, and the motion fails 1-4-0, but with, with healthy dialogue. And so did you want to make a motion to accept the platform as presented? Okay, so, made by Cynda, kind of?
Yes.
Okay, made by Cynda. Seconded by Naomi. A discussion of that? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Opposed, one. The motion carries four-one-zero. And we are on to item number eight, which is the approval of minutes. I will first entertain a motion to approve the January second, two thousand eighteen minutes. Do I have a motion made by Cindy, seconded by Andy? Are there any adjustments to the minutes? Cindy?
On page five, um, line number one ninety-eight, it says, "Board Member Gualyumi asked if there is an economy at scale with the charter schools." Um, I recall asking if there was a cost share for resources with the charter school.
Okay. Are there any other amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Oh, wait, one more? I'm sorry. Okay, no problem. We are good. So, we're, we're back to, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five-zero-zero. I'll now entertain a motion to accept January eighth, two thousand eighteen minutes, made by Andy, seconded by Cindy. Are there any adjustments to those minutes? Cindy?
Page number three, line number one thirty-three, uh, it says, "Board Member Gualyumi asked Chair Barnes if the curriculum committee could address the board later in the year." And I just thought, for clarification, just a minor thing to put in math, uh, curriculum committee. Um, and then on page number eight, there's just a small typo on line number three sixty-three, uh, where it says, "Is transportation provided to these places, um, or intended to be provide, provided?" There needs to be a D. Line number three sixty-six, um, it says, "Assistant Principal Bergeron responded that student athletes are responsible for getting themselves to home games." Um, I just added, even, I suggest adding, "Even when home games are not played in Merrimack." And that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any other adjustments to the eighth, items of the eighth? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five-zero-zero. We are on to item number nine, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under five thousand dollars with Matt.
Thank you. I have before you a gift to Reed's Ferry Elementary School from Julia Greenspan, who won Woodbine Lane, Merrimack, New Hampshire, in the amount of one hundred dollars. She generously gave this gift to Reed's Ferry School to support those children who, uh, fall short during periods when it's time to pay for lunch. So, it's, uh, be used at the discretion of administration, uh, to take care of students who, uh, otherwise wouldn't have the funds to pay for lunch, even though we have a, you know, a policy that allows them to keep charging. This'll be in addition to that, in order to give them funds.
Okay. Cindy?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the very kind and thoughtful gift, um, by Mrs. Greenspan, for a hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five-zero-zero with our thanks. Onto item number ten, which is the consent agenda with Mark.
Thank you. On consent, mate?
Let me read that.
We have, uh, one educator nomination, Kelly Bennett, grade one, grade one teacher at Thornton's Ferry School.
Is there, Andy?
I was going to ask him to repeat it, but I wouldn't. I vote we approve the consent agenda, is read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five-zero-zero. Onto item number eleven, which is other. There's correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come for the board? Chris?
Uh, I have some students wondering if we're going to be doing another, like, session on the homework policy, because a bunch of them have stuff they want to tell us about it, like how they feel about it.
That is scheduled for an upcoming meeting in February.
Do we know the exact date? Because I was, I've been asked for, asked for it multiple times.
I would say, uh, if the board would agree, February nineteenth would be the date.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other communications to come before the board? Um, I did forward to the board, uh, communication from a school psychologist who formerly lived in Merrimack and no longer does, but, uh, wanted to share insights from her professional position as a school psychologist in New Hampshire, as to the, uh, benefit of full-day kindergarten from that role in the, in her district, so, um, it was very insightful and, and welcome information. Michael?
I had a request for communications from a publication, which I'm going to refer to the administration to review.
Excellent. And I think that's already been, um, started. Uh, we were just afraid that they would go to press without, uh, talking to us and going on their own, so we reached out and told them that we'd be meeting tonight. So, more to come. So, um, is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Marge?
Um, I just, um, put into your packet, being notified by New Hampshire Public Broadcasting, that, um, our high school team was in Granite State Challenge and had moved, um, into the quarterfinals, so I thought that was important for you to know.
So, not that we will find out until it airs, but it was taped on the thirteenth, I believe, so now we just have to wait and see how we did. So, I have to say, you know, historically, those parents are tight-lipped. You get nothing out of them, so there will be no leak of how we did. So, is there any other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none? Comments? Are there comments from the board? Seeing none, onto item number twelve, new business. Is there any new business to come before the board?
I think the only thing, it's not really new business, but just to add, um, where Mark has already stated, that the homework protocol will be looked at February nineteenth. For February fifth, probably one of the most significant events will be your approving the warrants, um, and so, just for the public to realize, um, that's an important evening.
And item number, uh, thirteen is committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the board? Michael?
Uh, we had our professional development, um, committee meeting last, uh, last week? Yes. Or is it this week? Sometimes I can't figure it out. Last week. I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm not much to share, but just thoroughly impressed with the tools that the, this administration and the teachers use to, obviously, facilitate, uh, putting in teachers' hours, and I'm also, again, always, uh, very impressed with the educational hours that the teachers, staff, uh, par educators, uh, take beyond, uh, just, obviously, the days, uh, of teaching the children themselves, so, thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? I had one. It was, uh, the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee met on the tenth, I believe it was, and one of the things that came up was, obviously, we always get a great, um, report from Health Trust. We did meet our goal for my biometric screenings for last year, which is definitely a target we have upcoming, uh, this week, best-case scenario, weather-wise, obviously. Uh, it's Thursday, though, so it should be all better. Um, so, there will be, uh, the biometric screening for staff and Wellness Fair, which brings in, uh, community vendors, uh, gives them opportunity to realize what we have in the community that will further their agenda to have, um, maximize their wellness. And on top of that, we did get a presentation from, it's Life something, and I cannot, for some reason, it's not, it's in my other bag, but, uh, basically, it's in, um, Life Resources. Thank you, it was going to bother me all night. Um, it's an EAP program that they partner with, uh, Health Trust, so they are a third-party, uh, but they basically offer EAP services, everything from financial, legal, uh, uh, you know, psychological supports, um, phone supports, getting, um, resources for those who maybe need, um, counselors for further, um, further assistance, but, uh, even with those phone, um, supports, they offer six per incident. So, if, say you're having a problem, um, for every, you have six sessions to that problem at no cost through this EAP program. And what came to light, uh, which is, I think, of great value for those who, uh, maybe don't have extensive benefits to their employers, we have a lot of volunteers in our district, and we are considered, basically, in that realm, as well as, as board members and all the committee members that work on different committees throughout the, uh, the district, that, um, those services are available to them, too. So, as part of, um, just being tethered to the district. So, for those who need those kinds of supports, whether you have tax questions, you know, financial planning questions, um, just, there's a wealth of resources. Uh, the district has, um, information on that that they can share with those who are, those who are in need of that, and in my other bag, I have, um, materials that you can have with brochures on them, so I'll bring them for our next meeting. But that was very informative. So, it was a very productive meeting. Did I miss anything? Because I really blew it on not bringing the brochure, so, um, so, thank you, and more to come on that. So, are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, um, we will skip public comments on agenda items, because the public has left. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session, per RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral, two, sections A, B, and C. Do I have a motion? Made by Cindy, seconded, seconded by Naomi. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Michael?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries five-zero-zero. Thank you, and good night.